...activity, exercise.
Well, I'm a very lazy person.
Okay.
I grew up in Hawaii and my girlfriends were out surfing and I was the beach bunny.
All right.
So, you know, it's a challenge for me to make myself exercise, but I have been much more conscientious about it over the last three years because I just know that I need to. And I go to a couple of classes that I'm very religious about. I have to be or else I won't go. And I take a belly dancing class. It's belly funk. So, it's kind of mild aerobics, belly dancing, and core strengthening.
So, before you go on there, that's great. I think that already you're hitting such an important point.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, a lot of us, if we don't have a plan, specific plan, and some kind of accountability, and for you it's going to classes. For some people, it's having an exercise buddy. For some people, it's having a routine, a certain time of the day where they have it scheduled in their day, just like an important meeting or a family event.
Yes.
And, you know, so you said, "Look, I'm honest with myself. I'm naturally a little on the lazy side." You like lazing around on the beach as opposed to being out there with the surfers. But you've realized physical activity is really important, and so you have this plan. So, you were telling us, okay, so you do a belly funk class?
Yes, and it's followed by a gentle stretch, which is basically a beginning yoga class.
Oh, perfect.
And for me, it's the perfect combination. And I go twice a week, could be more, but my partner, my exercise partner is my dog.
Oh.
So, I do religiously walk my dog. Unfortunately, he's getting old, so he's slowing down a bit.
Oh, no.
But that keeps me, at least with a very, you know, with some daily minimal activity.
So, that way you get something, because you're walking the dog, you're going to the classes. And then I understand that within this context, this booklet has helped you kind of track that level of activity.
I looked through it recently in preparation to...
So, we have this booklet, Exercise and Physical Activity.
And I was very interested to note, in going through all the, excuse me, the individual exercises, that pretty much all of them, I would say 98% of them, are covered in one way or another in the two classes that I go to. And that was very reassuring, because I have great trust in my teachers. They're both fantastic. But it was nice to have an outside perspective and be able to look at this and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing this, and I'm doing this, and I'm doing this." The one thing that I haven't done specifically, that's not specifically addressed in the two classes that I'm going to, is weights.
Okay.
And I know for women of a certain age, osteoporosis becomes a factor. So, that's something now I'm going to try to actually add into my weekly schedule, because one of my teachers does have a weight class. And, you know, it's been a wonderful touchstone for me.
Right. So, that way you get a balance of the endurance, the weight, the resistance, you know, all these...
The stretch.
Stretch, right. So, you get with the belly and the yoga, you get the stretch, endurance, all in one thing. But then you add little activities here and there. You add the walking, the dog, and now you want to add specifically some weight training.
Yes, because I know that that's really important.
Right, of course, that's important. Pretty much everybody could benefit from that. And so, it's interesting that you've been able to use this booklet, first of all, to see, it was reassuring that you see these photos of exercises in there and you say, "Hey, I'm doing that." So, even somebody already says, "Oh, I'm doing all this stuff," could benefit from kind of double-checking.
Yes.
Yeah. You mentioned something else really interesting. You said that you trust your exercise instructor very much.
Yes.
How long have you been working with them?
Well, the stretch teacher I've actually been with for eight years, because I had a yoga class in my living room. I didn't organize it.
Wow.
I have a large living room, so it was a neighborhood yoga class. Then this woman came in. And then when that finally dissolved after several years, she teaches at the Hollywood Y and that's somewhere near me, so I followed her.
So, that's perfect. So, and there's something about that in this booklet as well, that if you're looking for an instructor or a personal trainer, because that could help in a lot of people's cases, for a lot of us, I know that if I don't have somebody, an exercise buddy or an exercise instructor, somebody to kind of keep me accountable, make sure that I'm going, I kind of can fall off every once in a while, just like you were saying.
And I've been with her for so long that she knows me.
Right.
She can tailor, even within the class structure. If I'm having a particular problem on a particular day, she can suggest a variation.
So, you trust her and she knows you.
Yes.
And for those of you watching at home, some guidelines from the booklet would be seeing if the person has some kind of certification, asking how long they've been doing what they've been doing, finding out if they've been working with people your age, particularly if you're elderly, particularly frail, some people have expertise in that area. And again, I mean, I think that's great that you've been doing that and that you're going to be doing more. And it's great to have you where we're talking about what we can do to live longer and live better and full vitality. And thank you so much. And for those of you watching at home, you can call the number below and order copies of this wonderful booklet, and we'd love to hear from you. Let us know. Give us a ring.
What I'd like to know, if you're going to adopt an animal from Los Angeles Animal Services, is that that companion animal is going to be spayed or neutered before you take her home or him home. We're also going, will have given the vaccines that are appropriate up to that age. So, you'll come with an animal that, and you'll get a free vet certificate to go for a vet check with one of our local licensed veterinarians to make sure everything is A-OK with your companion animal. So, those things are all included. Also, for seniors, there are fee reductions for seniors who have income levels that qualify. So, there's a number that's rolling across your screen, and that's the number that you call to find out more of the details. We have reduced adoption fees. In some circumstances, you can even get a free dog license. So, call us, come on down. We've got love just waiting for you.
So, if an emergency happens, are you prepared? Do you know who to call? Do you have a meeting place? An emergency can happen at any time. You need to be ready. Our family's a team. So, take a few minutes and put a family emergency communications plan together as a team. Check out labt.org for all the info. Just be ready, prepare together. All right, let's go. Come on. This ball is not going to play itself.
It's my job to teach you the safe way to ride a bike. You should always wear a helmet, just in case you fall. Ride the sidewalk. It's safer than the street.
Okay.
When crossing a driveway, stop your bike and look both ways.
Like this?
That's good. And obey all traffic laws.
Traffic laws?
Yep. Like stopping at stop signs and walking your bike across the street.
Boy, I'm glad you're my big brother.
I know.
Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Today, we're going to talk about planning before a crisis. It's important to understand what plans should take place before a crisis occurs. Things that need to be taken into consideration include cultural or generational differences, beliefs, values, unspoken topics. Decisions need to be made about medical, legal, and family issues. It's important to talk about the wishes of individuals before a crisis occurs, about their care and their medical treatment, not just what the family prefers or what the family thinks the person may want. Then, respect those wishes, because those wishes are important to the individual. Remember, people have the right to be in control of the quality of their life, understand the purpose of their treatment. They have the right to dignity and respect, comfort, which is physical, emotional, and spiritual. They may want to laugh, or be angry, or be sad, all interchangeable at random times, even if it doesn't make sense to others. They also have the right to have the truth. So, what are some actions a person needs to take before a crisis? Well, there's advance directives, which are the legal instructions given by individuals specifying what actions should be taken in the event that they are no longer able to make decisions due to illness or incapacity. Advance directive forms can be downloaded from the Internet. Some doctor's offices have them. Legal services have them also. Some community-based organizations have them. Once completed, it's a good idea to give your primary physician a copy for their records. Talk to your loved ones while they're in good condition and good health, and then respect their wishes. Make it a point to have your voice heard, even when you can no longer speak for yourself by using an advance directive. It's important to plan before a crisis.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. And Leslie, we were going to talk a little bit about the security features of the Code Amber Alert Tag. Can you explain some of those security features?
Yes, I can.
Please.
It's 256 encrypted.
Encrypted information, right.
And as far as identity theft, if they find your card, there's nothing that they can do with it other than get your name.
Right, I understand.
Or your personal, your medical information. The second tier, there's a two-tier to this, where when you go to the website, you could put in, you have your own password, like you would your email or a credit card.
Right.
And you could put in all your personal information. We live in a state that has fires and earthquakes.
Everything you can imagine.
Right. And you could scan in all your policies, policy numbers. Only you have access to it.
Okay, so there's not only the individual security code, you have an individual password.
Your passcode, right.
Well, I thought one of the most important features is a first responder, God forbid you're in an emergency room, can by scanning this or accessing the website, get the pertinent information to maybe save your life.
Yes, yes.
That's a great comfort.
Yes, that's the information that will come up first and only.
Yeah, because so many people, actually, it's hard for me to remember what I'm allergic to.
Right.
For example. And I love the idea, well, here, we're going to, we're going to show people now the information that is contained, but not limited to just these things, with your, with your Code Amber Alert Tag. We, this is new, but it's such a good idea. It should have been around for ages.
Right.
How did you move this from the concept and the worries of caring for your mother into a reality? This had to be like a family undertaking or engaged a lot of people?
Well, because there is so much on, for children, this is a division of the Code Amber abduction of children.
Right, of course.
And caring and being passionate about my mother and seeing what goes on in the hospitals and with the elderly, they need a voice.
Boy, do they ever. Now, while we're on the subject, the website, can you give us the website address? Because I really would like our viewers to check this out. And the website is? Code Amber Alert Tag.
...dot C-O-M slash L-D-R.
Okay, great, great, great. Now, we're going to have that up on the screen, so we don't have to repeat it endlessly. And when a person goes to the website, even a casual, even if driven by casual interest, they're going to get some questions that frankly, may be the first time they've addressed them. Do you know who to call in case of an emergency? Do you have your insurance policy number? Who's your medical provider? That stuff is not always at the tip of our tongues.
Right, and you would put that in, so that when it's not at the tip of your tongue, no matter who finds it, the first responses have that information, because they will ask you, "Do you have insurance?"
Of course, yes, they will.
Yeah, you know.
For those $1,200 ambulance rides.
And I try to encourage the elderly on patient information, which they're now implicating. Put your pharmacist.
Yes.
Because their medications change all the time.
Yes, and they may be taking several medications.
They usually are taking several, not just...
Yes.
And you want to make sure they interact with one another. And who better knows this than your pharmacist?
Exactly. Now, you can print this information out once you've put it into the forms, correct?
Absolutely. You could print it out, you could hand it out. I think it will one day replace the patient information form that we all have to fill out at doctor's offices.
Wouldn't that be a wonder?
Yes.
You know, it's funny, having twice now in the last few months visited emergency rooms, it would be a boon not to have to keep filling these things out.
All you have to do is show them this card.
Yeah.
They pull it up, boom, they have your, all your information.
And Code Amber Alert Tag, it's important that you get that down, because you can access the website. And is this a day-to-day thing with you now, Leslie?
Oh, this is a day-to-day.
Is it taking over your life?
It's taken over my life, and it's cost-effective.
Oh, yes, the cost.
Yes, it's only...
I was astonished when you told me the number. Listen to this number.
It's $19.95 plus tax for a year.
A year, a year.
A year.
Not per month, I guess.
And it makes a great present. I had my insurance agent buy them as thank-you presents. He sent me a Visa card and said, "Have lunch on me," and I had so much problem with it that he has since found out this makes a great present and it lasts for a year. The renewal lasts for a year. If they mention that they saw the show Aging in Los Angeles.
Right.
Their reward will be, we will give them an extra month to that $19.95.
See, there are rewards to being a viewer of Aging Well in L.A. Leslie, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Well, I know it's still painful, the loss of a mom. There's nothing worse. But you've done something positive in her memory.
Yes.
I wish you great luck with this.
Thank you.
I'm going to sign up today.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being with us here on Aging Well in Los Angeles. We'll see you next time.
Ensuring that you, your family, and your home are prepared for a disaster is critical. Be self-reliant and assume responsibility for your own safety and that of your family. Learn what you will need to know for each emergency. Learn how to evacuate and how to shelter in place. Practice your plan and ensure that everyone in the family knows where emergency equipment is located, where your designated meeting place is, and where you may be evacuated to in the area. You may need to duct tape your windows and frames if you're asked to shelter in place. If you have to evacuate, gloves will protect your hands from glass and/or debris that you may need to move or maneuver. In order to reduce hazards, heavy objects should be kept on lower shelves. All heavy furniture, like shelves, bookcases, pictures, mirrors, et cetera, should not hang over or near beds and should be anchored in place. Water heaters should be strapped down. Make sure you know how to shut off your water, gas, and electricity if necessary. You'll also need to show your neighbors, family, and others where your connections are and the instructions for turning them off. Ensure that cupboards and drawers have latches. You should also keep fire extinguishers in your kitchen, garage, and bedroom.
You will need to protect yourself during and after an earthquake, as aftershocks might occur. If you use a wheelchair, ensure a safe location, lock your brakes, and cover your head and neck with your hands. If you're in bed, stay put and cover your head. If possible, get underneath a sturdy table or desk.
To keep informed of current news and instructions, such as sheltering in place, evacuation orders, or boil water orders, a battery-operated TV or radio is a must in these situations. If you're deaf or hard of hearing, you'll need to find alternate ways to ensure that you can keep informed and communicate with neighbors and first responders. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
...will be a live broadcast, broadcasting live around the globe, direct from Los Angeles City. All good morning, Los Angeles. It's Friday, December 9th. We are in the L.A. City Council chambers, awaiting the arrival of our quorum. We want to thank Mr. Weisar, Ms. Perry, I'm Councilmember Zine. And while we wait for the quorum, we will begin with presentations. We do have seven presentations today. You can view us on Channel 35, also on the Internet and on the phone. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Friday is normally Day of Presentations. So, our first presentation will be by the Honorable Councilmember Jeanne Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I am very pleased to join Ms. Sophia and Lisa Watson to celebrate the Downtown Women's Center this morning. Today, we are not just celebrating the great services that the Downtown Women's Center provides, but the innovative facility that they recently completed, and that is helping to support and house so many women in need. This year, the Downtown Women's Center was one of the few distinguished organizations awarded a preservation honor from the National Trust for Historic Preservation for the restoration of the Elias Katz Shoe Factory. National Preservation Awards are only given to those organizations who have given new meaning to their communities through preservation of their architectural and cultural heritage. I am proud to say that our city shared in this honor for our part in ensuring that the building was transferred to the Downtown Women's Center for this purpose. Co-recipients of the award included the Ninth Council District, the Redevelopment Agency, the Spectra Company, and the architects and engineers responsible for the beautiful design. The award is an honor befitting the hard work and forethought that went into the development of a state-of-the-art facility that serves some of our most underserved women. With over 50,000 homeless individuals in Los Angeles County alone, including a large concentration of people in Central City East, new facilities that provide permanent supportive housing are increasingly important. The Downtown Women's Center has been uniquely committed to assisting low-income and homeless women achieve the stability to become healthy, happy, contributing members of our city. The story started in 2005, when the Downtown Women's Center leased the Elias Katz Shoe Factory with support from the Ninth Council District and the City of Los Angeles, and undertook an extensive retrofitting that brought this dilapidated 1926 building up to code for residential use. The transformation not only preserved the historic nature of the building, but added state-of-the-art accessibility, fire and safety systems, and most importantly, 71 units of permanent supportive housing for some of Skid Row's neediest women. In 2010... All right, thank you, Mr. Rosendale, thank you. In 2010, they opened their new center that featured spacious studio apartments, a rooftop garden, a daytime drop-in center, and the area's first medical and mental health clinic for uninsured women, all created from this converted warehouse space. In addition, the restoration effort is in line for LEED Silver Certification for transforming an underutilized building into a beautiful new facility. And it is an honor for the Downtown Women's Center to receive this important award. It's not only a win for the City of Los Angeles, but for the women who live there and who are now enjoying a very happy, healthy life here in Los Angeles. And now, our keynote, Sophia Russell, to say a few words about what the center has meant to her.
Thank you, Jeanne Perry. I want to thank the Los Angeles City Council for the proclamation recognizing the award given to the Downtown Women's Center by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We are very happy at the new site. The building is absolutely beautiful. The amenities are more than we could expect from living on Skid Row. We have two Jacuzzis, two laundromats, an exercise room, a library, a medical clinic, and a coffee shop with boutique made by DWC. The Downtown Women's Center has been providing a safe haven for homeless women ever since 1978. The Day Center is a place where homeless, disabled, and low-income women can spend their time away from the dangers that often prey upon women... time away from the dangers that often prey upon women in the streets of Skid Row. A homeless's familiar sounds, familiar places, familiar sights, familiar faces. The Downtown Women's Center is all of this and more to 71 women that were previously homeless. We have all the comforts of living in a place that, to most of us, is like a mansion. We have security, all the food we can eat, donated clothes, a staff that works hard to service our needs, and volunteers that offer their services unselfishly. I am grateful to the Los Angeles City Council for the proclamation. I am grateful to the Downtown Women's Center for providing me with a place to call home for more than 11 years. Thank you, City Council, and thank you Historic Resource Group and Spectra, our preservation partners, for the building. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, just to close, Downtown Women's Center, Fifth and San Pedro, beautiful building, right next to a market-rate condominium. Everybody gets along. There's a great café there, and all of the gift store there with the gifts made by the women who live there. And if you can't get Downtown, their goods are also sold at Bloomingdale's. So if you really want to support them, that's the Downtown Women's Center. Go to the Bloomingdale's website and buy DWC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Congratulations for the Women's Center. And then our original round of applause is from Councilmember Rosendahl. We currently have eight members present still awaiting the quorum. We have other presentations. Mr. Weisar, are you ready? All right. Well, let's do Mr. Weisar, and then we'll go to the canine. Mr. Weisar, CD 14. Mr. Weisar, it's fresh off the press.
Thank you very much.
It's arriving right now.
I wanted to make sure we got your signature.
You have it, sir. Thank you.
Mr. President. And good morning, everyone. Good morning, Los Angeles. I'm very excited to be here with Miguel Sanchez. He is a Council District 14 constituent. He is a Roosevelt High School graduate, and also currently manages the local Domino's Pizza. And under his leadership, Domino's Pizza has done a number of things where they've stepped up to assist our fire department, local residents in need, and have gone beyond the call of duty to be a great neighbor to support our local community. He is here today accompanied by his wife, Mary Decapetla Sanchez. Where are you, Mary? Right here. And daughter?
Zoe.
What's the name of the daughter?
Zoe.
Zoe, first one?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Sister-in-law Laura Decapetla?
She's my mom.
Sister-in-law? No?
She's not here.
Okay. And your mom's here.
Yes.
What's your mom's name?
Sylvia.
Sylvia, welcome, Sylvia. And we have a number of his staff who have joined us today. And I recall one time when there was a fire at Coming Street and another one near Boyle, where our fire department went, put in long hours to ensure that they provided the safety for the victims, that they put out the fire. And one of the things my office often does is to ask our local fire department in these situations if there's anything they need our assistance with. As is often the case, they say that the tired, hard-working firefighters who had just put out a fire, they're hungry. And we have called Domino's Pizza out of the blue, telling them what the situation is, and they have donated pizzas to our firefighters after they have done their job in the line of duty. But more than that, Miguel is a well-liked manager, someone who has shown strong leadership. He is well-respected. The people describe him as being humble and an excellent leader, and someone who motivates his staff to strive for more. And under his leadership, Domino's Pizza has partnered with numerous schools, churches, and organizations to assist in times of need. And I'm extremely proud to have someone like Miguel there in the local community, who grew up there, knows the community, and now is assisting in his capacity to not only assist the local organizations, but to assist our great fire department and other law enforcement officials when they are out there doing their work. So I wanted to bring Miguel in to congratulate him on his excellent service as a manager at the local Domino's, but also for his selfishlessness and for his commitment to help where needed. So Miguel, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, thank you very, very much. And I could recall that one time when I called, when there was that fire near Boyle, and the firefighters were hungry and tired and full of smoke, and I called your place myself, and you asked me, "What was it for?" Because we ordered a lot of pizzas. And I told you what was it for, and you said, "We'll be right there, right away." I asked how much it was, and you say, "For our firefighters, we'll do it for free." So thank you so much on behalf of the city. And this is a resolution thanking you for your contributions to our community and for all the work you do in our community. Thank you so much.
Mr. Weisar. Mr. Weisar, there's been a request for the location so staff can visit this great Domino's. The location?
It is on the corner of Boyle— Is that Sixth or Seventh?
Whittier.
Whittier, right?
Yeah, Whittier and Boyle.
It's on the corner of Whittier and Boyle, and the address is?
2193 East Whittier Boulevard.
2193 East Whittier Boulevard, right over the Sixth Street Bridge, going from Downtown to Boyle Heights on the left-hand side.
We have staff that wants to go visit you, so make sure you let them know they're from City Hall.
Yes. Can I translate this in Spanish?
Yeah, yeah. Let me ask—
You can read all you want.
Yeah, we need an interpreter. Can we have an interpreter?
Interpreter, please. We do have an interpreter.
Yeah, I could do it, but my mom reminds me once in a while that I don't do such a great job, so.
We do have the official interpreter.
Okay.
To the podium, please. Thank you. Here she comes. Well, there she comes.
There she is.
All right.
Buenos dias a todos. Bueno quiero dar gracias primero, antes que nada a Dios por darme la oportunidad de poder ayudar a mi comunidad de Boyle Heights y pertenecer a la misma. Gracias al señor José Weisar y su equipo por la alianza y lazos que nos ha unido en tiempos de necesidad hacia nuestra comunidad.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank God for giving me this opportunity to be able to help my community of Boyle Heights, and because I also belong to the same community. I'm a member of such. I also want to thank Mr. Jose, Councilmember Jose Weisar, and his team for his alliance and our ties, which have united us in very difficult, needed times of need, and it's helped us come together in our community.
Gracias a las escuelas primarias, iglesias, hospitales que nos han permitido colaborar, en especial la preparatoria Roosevelt High School y su equipo de fútbol. A la Escuela de Dolores Mission por el programa de Under Wings para poder ayudar a los estudiantes a sobresalir en sus estudios. Gracias a todos los que pudieron acompañarme en este día tan especial.
I also would like to thank the schools, the elementary schools, churches, hospitals, and everyone who have allowed us to collaborate in needed efforts. Especially, I would like to thank Roosevelt High School and their football team. I also like to thank Dolores Mission School, the Under Wings program, for being able to help the students overcome obstacles and achieve success in their studies.
Gracias a mi equipo de trabajo por su esfuerzo, por siempre poder ayudar a nuestra comunidad, en especial a mi asistente Beatriz Herda por su tremendo trabajo y crear en los ideales de poder ayudar a nuestro prójimo. A mi familia, mi mamá, mi esposa, Mary, y mi hija Zoe, por su amor y apoyo incondicional y por ser mi inspiración cada día a ser mejor.
I also would like to thank everyone who joined us on that very special day. Also, I would like to thank my work, my teammates, for their efforts and for always being there, willing to help our community. Especially, I would like to thank my assistant, Beatriz Herda, for her incredible work and for believing in the ideals of being able to help our brothers and sisters. Also, I would like to thank my family, my mother, my wife, Mary, and my daughter, Zoe, for her great love and my wife's unconditional love, and for always inspiring me to be a better person each and every day.
Finalmente, solo quiero decir una frase que mis abuelos me obsequiaron cuando era yo pequeño, y dice así: "Hijo, haces bien y no mereces quién. Gracias y que tengan un excelente día."
And to finish, I would like to share a phrase that my grandparents always would tell me and inspire me greatly. "Son, do well for others and never look back nor be stopped by who you're helping." Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And that's certainly so true, what Miguel's parents had mentioned to—grandparents had mentioned to him, which was, "Help people and never look back who you've been helping." And I think that thing is—those words are golden. You know, karma always comes back whenever we least expect it, and we do things for the love of the community, and Miguel has showed that. And I hope corporate Domino's is watching in terms of, "What a great manager you have here in Miguel." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Congratulations to Domino's. We do have our quorum, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Weisar, Corretz, Corrian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry, second by Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, that would take us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weston, second by Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. President, would you care to run through the agenda at this time?
Let's do the agenda.
Very good. Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. There is a request for a member to continue this item to January 10, 2012.
Without opposition? No opposition? We'll continue that to January 10.
Very good. Item two is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Rosen— Special—Mr. Reyes?
I do have an amendment for item number two. Can I do that now?
Well, we call it special, so we'll address that appropriately. So we have an amendment and a special on number two. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items three through five are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Do we have any cards?
Sir, we do. We have cards on items three, four, and five.
All right, call those special. And then we have a special at 10:15, but we'll come back to that later. So that—
Mr. President, would you like to return to presentations at this point in time?
Yes, we will. Presentations. Mr. Weston, are you ready? Mr. Garcetti? Let's go with Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti. President Garcetti. And Mr. Weston, you can come after that? You ready after that? Okay. All right. Okay, we'll go with Mr. Garcetti, then we'll go—
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. President. A very good morning to you, and I'm very, very proud today to honor three incredible journalists who represent journalists everywhere in this city and around the country and the world, to mark and commemorate the first—City of Los Angeles's first Latinas in Media Day, which also honors the coming El Dia de la Guadalupe, the day in which la Virgen de Guadalupe is honored in Latin America and worldwide. And we took this celebration as a moment to celebrate three extraordinary journalists that are here in the City of Los Angeles. I know that all of us believe that a robust and free press is vital to an effective democracy. As Council President, we've worked together on this council to make sure that these meetings are open and accessible to the press. We have not only broadcast on Channel 35, but throughout the Internet. We make sure that people can listen in on their telephones and that they can actually follow these meetings remotely from our council chambers in San Pedro and Van Nuys. All of this is done to ensure that the mission that these women share behind me of getting information to the people, that an informed democracy is the best bulwark for changing people's lives for the better. And like media—it is—sorry, like government, it is important that the media looks like the people of our city and our nation. Oftentimes, we see Latinos in media who are the exception. They're the ones who are by themselves in a newsroom or in front of a camera, and Latinos and women are underrepresented, as we know, in the newsroom. But that's changing, and it's changing because of the women that we honor here today who are leading that change, not just as Latinas, but as women, and some of the Los Angeles Press Corps' top journalists. Latina girls 12 to 17 are the largest group of girls of color in the nation. They're more likely than their non-Latina peers to face the foremost serious threats girls face to achieving success: depression, pregnancy, substance abuse, and dropping out of high school. And our honorees today serve as an inspiration to the next generation of Latinas that they can lead change for themselves and for their community. At a time when economic and educational challenges are holding our young people back, these women show the path forward. The women we honor here today do throw through their work in the newsroom and through their work in the community. And so today, these three women who we honor, La Opinión's Pilar Marrero— Hot 92—give her a round of applause. Hot 92.3, Josefa Salinas. And Dateline NBC's Luz Villarreal. I'd like to hear from each of them, and first, I'd like to introduce Pilar Marrero, who, for anyone in politics or who follows politics, is a must-read. She's born in Venezuela. She's a senior political writer and columnist for La Opinión, where she has written for 21 years. She started when she was just a little girl. She also writes a weekly syndicated column, is a sought-after analyst on political and social issues, and she teaches journalism courses at UCLA Extension as well. She's been awarded fellowships from the International Center for Journalists and the New School, and she's writing a book right now about the United States' immigration policy and how it affects the nation's economic future and national principles. Please welcome Pilar Marrero.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, City Council. I'm really overwhelmed. I'm very happy to be in the company of these amazing women. I used to cover City Hall. I used to sit over there, or in a little room in the back over there, and cover City Hall when Tom Bradley was the mayor. I mean, that's a long time ago. And I'm very happy to have always worked in Spanish media to represent my community, to be able to bring that community the information they need to survive and to prosper in this great country. And it is great that things have changed so much, that we now get honored and we now get our calls answered by politicians, which wasn't always the case when I started working for La Opinión back in the early '90s. So thank you so much, and thank you to the community that has actually made us relevant and important, and that we represent with so much pride. Thank you so much.
Next, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Josefa Salinas. Josefa is a graduate of the University of Michigan and was working in juvenile probation when she walked into San Francisco's KSOL and asked for a job. She came to Los Angeles in 1990 and worked at KJLH and KACE before moving to Power 106, where she was known as the Angelita de la Noche. Salinas also launched the nation's—sorry, the station's Knowledge is Power Foundation, which, if you've not interacted with, is an extraordinary force in our community, led it to its first $1 million raised. She joined 92.3 FM in 2001 and is now the station's morning news anchor, hosts the station's weekly public affairs program, The Community Review, and serves as the station's community affairs director. Despite all of that, she still finds time to be active with the YMCA, the REACH Foundation, Unite, and religious and law enforcement. Please welcome Josefa for some words as well.
Thank you, Council, and thank you, everyone who's here, and especially my friends and comadres that are here with me. It's a very incredible honor to be here today. I see so many familiar faces, having been in Los Angeles here, working diligently for 21 years in broadcasting, and it was my honor to be one of the first Latinas really to start making some noise in English radio. And I was actually in radio at Power 106 when there were no other women on the air but me. So it was kind of lonely in the locker room. But a lot of things have changed since then, and so many young women that I meet now say that they are in radio because they heard my voice, and they knew that it was possible. So I will leave you with the words that I leave my audience with every single week, and the words that I live by, and the words that I continue to inspire people with, and that is to stay focused, stay strong, and stay informed. That's my job, and I'll do it as long as they give me a mic. Thank you.
Now, let me introduce Luz Villarreal, who has been a producer for Dateline NBC for 10 years, during which time she has chased stories across the United States and the world. She spent nearly a month in the field covering Hurricane Katrina— She spent nearly a month in the field covering Hurricane Katrina, and her team was honored with the Alfred I Dupont Columbia University Award, which is considered the broadcast news equivalent of the Pulitzer Prize. Villarreal also mentors student journalists. She is the Burbank Dateline Bureau's internship coordinator and the educational vice president of the California Chicano News Media Association. Villarreal began her career in the 13th Council District at KTLA before moving to KCBS. There, she was part of a team that won an Emmy for Best Daytime Newscast, and she received an individual Emmy nomination for her role as a feature producer. She's been an extraordinary voice and extraordinary person, bringing together the most important stories of our time. Please welcome Luz.
Thank you, everybody, and I especially want to thank the Council for recognizing women—Latino women in the media today. I got to tell you, I'm really humbled to be here, and I want to thank all the friends and family members and loved ones who came to support us. I want to tell you that—I have to assure you that it's not just the three of us here today that are making our mark in the media. There are many, many of us out there, and there are a few here as well in the audience. I take great pride in my position at Dateline NBC, and as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, I do train, recruit, and encourage interns at Dateline NBC to help them become the best that they can be in this business. And I also am very involved with CCNMA, Latino Journalists of California, in helping invest in their future. We raise scholarship money for them every year to support their educational desires to become journalists in the field. And for me, media is a wonderful opportunity to be—stay informed and to help the public stay informed, and that's why I got into this business. But one of the things that's really important to me is giving back to the community. And for me, that's how I got here. I had role models. I had people who supported my education and encouraged me to get into this business. And if I wasn't—if I didn't have people like that in my life, I wouldn't be here today, and I'm just glad that there are many, many more of us out there now doing that for younger women. I did want to tell you that I had this goal of being a journalist since I was in high school—I think sophomore, and I really didn't think I would be able to do it because I didn't have anybody in my life at that time that I knew who could do it. And I met a lot of veteran—people who are veteran reporters now through California Chicano News Media Association. And by their example and support and encouragement, I knew that there were other Latinos in this business and that, "Why shouldn't I do it?" And here I am, doing the same thing. But I want to let you know that I'm not here alone. I had people—to people who have with me here today that I want to recognize as well. One of them is a mentor, and proud to say that she's also my best friend. Her name is Eleanor Vega, who happens to be the LA bureau chief for CBS News, somebody who should be recognized in the future as we move forward in front of the City Council. And I also have an editor at NBC News, who is my personal writing coach, the person who sees the first drafts of all my stories that I write, my soulmate and husband of 14 years, Dino Castro. Again, I do want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for starting this Latina Media Day, and I look forward to seeing who the others will be who will follow.
Thank you very much. Other members—
If I may, Council President, I just wanted to first thank you for everything you do as professionals, but more importantly, as role models. I know that each one of you has made it a point to connect what's relevant to our families and to our neighborhoods, because that's what the news is about. It's how we change our lives. When I have committee meetings, town hall meetings, the majority of folks that show up are women, whether the abuelitas or the tias, the moms who are suffering and are trying to find a way for their children. And when they see people like you either behind the scenes or on the screen or with your name on those columns, it makes a huge difference in how you inspire our youth. So I just want to take a moment to thank you for your hard work, and want to thank the families for sharing you with us and helping out our communities and our city. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you again to Luz, Josefa, and Pilar for their great work. Let's give them one last round of applause, and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, as we wind up this presentation, our next speaker will be Councilman Herb Weston, and it is time to adopt the pet.
Mr. Weston.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. President and members. You know, a couple of times a month, I have tried to find a home for a dog twice a month. Mr. Corretz tries to find homes for cats. So today's person looking to be adopted is a terrier cocker spaniel mix, and she's just gorgeous. Her name is Cookie. Her color is gray, and she's approximately 10 years old, and she's as sweet as she can be, and she's looking for a home. If you need to have a companion animal, she's just been back here chilling all morning. She's probably the perfect dog to have. I believe she gets along well with children and other animals, and she's looking for a home. Now, we—Paul and I love doing this, you know, finding homes for dogs and for cats, but the reality of the situation is, if we don't succeed, then these dogs are put to sleep. And so I'm asking anyone that can hear my voice, anyone that is watching this on Channel 35, anybody that's here in City Hall, because the lion's share of the animals that we adopt go to people who work here and who visit here. So please, we're going to keep her in the back and come down and literally save her life. I mean, she hasn't done anything. She didn't ask to be born. She needs somebody to take care of her and love her, and she'll give you the same love in return. Again, her name is Cookie. The telephone number is 888-452-7381. Again, I'm going to keep Cookie in the back. I'm going to show her to the audience, and I'm going to ask you to look in his face.
There you go. Anyone in the audience ready to take Cookie home? How about the girl softball? Anyone there? We got a—Mr. Weston, Mr. Weston, we now have an individual who's taking Cookie. Sir, would you please go up and stand with Mr. Weston?
That keeps our 100% pet adoption rate—
Sir, go up and stand with Mr. Weston. He will give you—
Puppies and dogs alike.
Cookie has now found a new home, sir.
I saw him. He walked past me. We shook hands, and he said she was beautiful.
Sir, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Ricardo Moreno, in Wilshire Boulevard from Emmanuel Presbyterian Church, and this little dog will be for my daughter.
There you go.
I'm going to let you carry it.
Mr. Weston, I think that's record-breaking time for the adoption.
No, that's—the fastest one, Mr. President.
Thank you. Congratulations, and Cookie has a new home. Congratulations. Our next presentation from Council District Number Five, Mr. Corretz.
Could you stand up for a long speech? I'll try to make as fast as I can. Colleagues, I'm delighted today that we're honoring Molly Peir here in City Hall. She's joined by Project Chicken Soup executive director Catherine Friedman and Sue Higgins, who is a board member, team leader, and longtime volunteer of the organization. I'm sorry that Councilmember Kocorian couldn't be here, because I know how much she also wanted to join in this salute. Molly is a beloved 91-year-old San Fernando Valley resident who, in the face of tragedy, helped found Project Chicken Soup, the tremendous volunteer effort that prepares and delivers kosher meals for more than 100 LA County residents with HIV and AIDS. Think of the joy, nourishment, and comfort that this service provides people in need, and yet it was forged out of truly tragic circumstances of a mother losing her son. Molly's late son Nathaniel was a blessing to Molly and everyone he helped throughout his lifetime. A gay man, when he first told Molly he was gay, Molly did what all parents should do. She respected and treasured her son and decided to learn more by joining organizations such as Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, and one for Jewish Parents of Gay Children, and soon she was even leading meetings and giving speeches. Nathaniel was one of the first private doctors to care for patients with HIV and AIDS when much of the world was too terrified or indifferent regarding this grim epidemic. Sadly, Nathaniel himself would die of AIDS in 1989. Before his passing, Molly was already busy volunteering, cooking kosher meals for people with HIV and AIDS, and this effort grew into Project Chicken Soup. Twice a month, Project Chicken Soup volunteers create and deliver packages containing three complete entrees plus two quarts of soup, always including one quart of chicken soup, which, of course, is Jewish penicillin. The packages also include two vegetable side dishes, fresh fruit salads, desserts, and a breakfast package, and nutritional supplements. Non-perishable packaged goods and toiletries are also distributed, and special holiday packages. The only eligibility requirement is proof of living with HIV and AIDS. And these bags are delivered to sites that are all over LA County, and even those who aren't in the delivery area can come and pick up a package. But it's not just the food that can literally help promote health and sustain life. Project Chicken Soup's clients are uplifted by the phone conversations they have with Molly before each delivery. Molly's boundless, tender compassion is displayed not just through her years of involvement with Project Chicken Soup, but also by her decades of baking cookies for the Gay Men's Chorus of Los Angeles, her YouTube videos supporting marriage equality, and her able fundraising for AIDS Walk Los Angeles. Indeed, earlier this year, her presence at the 27th Annual AIDS Walk was a spectacular highlight. For though she was in a wheelchair, her shining example and amazing heart put smiles on the faces and charmed and energized everyone who took part. She was truly what we call a lovely, loving woman and a constant source of mitzvot. Over the years, I personally lost many friends to AIDS, and that's certainly among the reasons I've always advocated for greater understanding and better health care and housing for people with HIV and AIDS. It's great that we've made significant medical progress with improved treatment and care and less discrimination and ignorance, but this is still a disease that has devastated whole populations globally, all sectors of society, including by taking a terrible toll on women and children. Molly reminds us that this disease needs to be conquered once and for all, and on behalf of Councilmember Kocorian and myself and the entire city, I want to thank you for all the wonderful things that you've done, for your amazing activism, profound heart and soul.
Mr. Rosendahl for comments. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was so moved by that. This is our flag. I'm a gay man. I lost my first partner, Christopher Lee Blaueman, in January of 1995. He was a total sweetheart. I will always miss him. But the fact that you embraced your son and brought him close to you is one of the only things I can say about the AIDS epidemic that was good. Now, there isn't anybody who can say, again, "Oh, I don't know anybody who's gay," because the good part of the insanity and the Holocaust that we went through was that all of a sudden people recognized and realized that we're everywhere. And your love and your affection and that chicken soup goes a long way. So just God bless you, and thank you so much for being who you are.
Mr. Corretz.
I was born in New York City on August 6, 1920. I attended public schools and graduated Seward Park High School on the Lower East Side in June 1937. Although I matriculated at Brooklyn College, I attended only for a short period of time since the Great Depression of the '30s, when my father was forced to lose his business by the Depression. I went to work for $12 a week. In May of 1939, I met my husband, David Peir, and on January 29, 1940, during World War II, when he graduated from Officers Candidate School as a second lieutenant, we were married in the town of Leesburg, Virginia. He served both in the European Theater of Operations and in the Pacific as a cargo security officer, and was honorably discharged as a first lieutenant in January of 1946. Our first son, Ken, was born in January 1948, followed by Jerry in November of 1950, and Nathaniel in May of 1952. He liked being called Buddy. In December of 1953, relocated to the San Fernando Valley, where I have lived ever since. All three of my sons were educated in California, earning their several degrees at California University at Berkeley and at San Francisco. Then, my youngest son, Buddy, went to Albert Einstein Medical School in New York. My husband was a CPA, and I began to work in the LAUSD system, first as a school clerk typist in 1956, ending up as the office manager at the Lowman School for Disabled Children— where I remained until my retirement in 1981. We lived in Arleta, then moved to a larger home in North Hills, and finally into an apartment in Sherman Oaks after all the sons had scattered to other parts of the country to pursue their careers. Tragically, my husband, David, passed away in December of 1975 at age 56. We had hosted a dinner party on December 25 with laughing, talking, and enjoying ourselves with our guests, and with the next morning, he suffered a massive heart attack. The shock was overwhelming, and I was devastated, but with the support of colleagues, family, friends, and fellow community activists, I managed to survive and continue my life. I took pride in the legacy I was left in seeing the success of my sons rising in their chosen fields and in continuing my service to my community as a volunteer. I retired in 1981, secretly convinced that I would not live beyond the age of 65 because of my husband's too early demise. I thought at that time that I would enjoy life for both of myself and David for a few years and would then be ready to go. I fooled myself. I proceeded then to engage in other interesting activities, including becoming a volunteer at the Ethel Percy Andrus Gerontology Center at USC in the early '80s, when gerontology was a little-known science. This led to my contacting a group called Seniors Abroad, which was a program of exchange homestays with people of Japan and later Australians and New Zealanders, forming friendships with them that have lasted until today, traveling to other parts of the world and being one of the subjects of a series of educational videos made through the auspices of the University of Hawaii's Gerontology Center. I appeared in 18 of the 13 videos, which are still being used today in gerontology classes all over the world. When my youngest son graduated from Albert Einstein in 1977, he spent 18— When my youngest son graduated from Albert Einstein in 1977, he spent 18 months in London on a special grant to study neuromuscular diseases in children as he planned to be a pediatrician. It was then that I knew he was gay, and the suspicions I had harbored in the years and denied were made evident. However, he feared coming out to me since so many of his colleagues had been ejected by their families, but that never happened with me. When he returned to the United States, it was confirmed, and it was difficult for him to believe I was supportive and accepting until he knew that I had joined PFLAG and read all the literature I could find on homosexuality and became an activist in the gay rights movement, even walking with the group in the Gay Pride Parade very proudly. When he set up his practice in New York, AIDS had raised its ugly head, and he became one of the first doctors to treat the disease. He worked with Dr. Matilda Crim, the then president of AMFAR, the American Foundation for AIDS Research, and he was active in receiving AZT as a certified and useful drug, which was the only thing available at that time. His knowledge and his skills and compassion. In 1989, he died of the disease. No emotion in the world is more devastating than the loss of a child, but I determined that Nathaniel's memory and short life would not be forgotten. With the help of other dedicated volunteers, I established what we now call Project Chicken Soup. I have continued to be a team leader and board member through the years, using my cooking skills to nurture people with the disease where my son used his medical skills. My compassion for our clients is also manifested in my calling each one eight days prior to delivery day to ascertain they will be home when the food is delivered. I have a personal relationship with each one and enjoy spending the three to four hours making the calls. This has given me a spiritual connection with my son, which has sustained me through the years, and I hope to continue until I am no longer physically able. Thank you very much.
I'm going to get in this photo. That would be great. Thank you, sweetheart. God bless you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keretz, and for that wonderful presentation. And our next presentation will be Mr. Rosendahl.
But folks, those of you who know me historically over the years, I'm very happy this very moment because Hillary Rodham Clinton, the Secretary of State, got up in Geneva and finally said that the United States of America believes gays and lesbians, bisexual and transgender people should have basic rights. So to see a lady here making the chicken soup for her son was an amazing experience. Now, why am I standing here? I'm standing here because I'm backed up by an incredible group of people here that are champions, the Westchester Softball Championship Teams, folks. I want to thank the Westchester Delray Softball League for coming to City Hall today. Standing before you are real champions. To be more specific, we have the 2011 Big League Western Region and Southern California State Champions, who made it all the way to the National Softball. Thank you, World Series. The 2011 Major League Western Region and Southern California State Champions, and the Minor League, nine- and 10-year-olds, 2011 Southern California State Champions. A big thanks to our coaches, who led our Westchester Playa Delray Team to excel on the field. For the Big Leagues, I want to recognize Manager Darrell Lee and Coaches Kevin Morris and Stan Hong. For the Major Leagues, I want to recognize Manager Mike Dolan and Coaches Brent Times and Dean Sisari. And last, but certainly not least, for the Minor Leagues, thanks to you, Managers Keith Herbert and Coaches Keith Parker and Joe Benjamin. The Westchester Delray Softball and Little League has been in existence since 1954. Every year, they serve and support over 200 families in Westchester Playa Delray and, most recently, Playa Vista. It's a league that successfully develops courage, character, and loyalty to boys and girls. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we are honored to recognize all of you for your impressive athletic feats and valiant sportsmanship and championship attitude. You make the entire city of Los Angeles and your community very proud. I was asking a young lady, what was so much and why did you all win? She said, "Because we're a team and we work together." And we were up in, what, where were you?
Portland, Oregon.
In Portland, Oregon, where they really got to experience another location, San Bernardino. And so just the idea of getting out and about, mixing and mingling, and being absolute winners by working together and playing together and having fun together will set these young people up for the rest of their life as champions forever. Thank you. Who's speaking? Come on up. Let's give him a round of applause. Without a good coach, you don't have good teams.
Thank you, everybody. I'm Bill Consella. I'm actually not one of the coaches. I'm the president of the league. And they get to have all the fun, and I get to have all the headaches. But this is the culmination of a great season for us. Our main mission, as the councilman indicated, is really to help educate the youth of our country because they are our future. Softball is merely our tool to do that. Our classroom is the softball field. Our tools are teaching them teamwork and how to get along with everybody and know their role in life, which will help them later on down the road. This year, with three champion teams, which is unprecedented in Little League, we are able to reap many of the benefits of what our program has been doing in the Westchester Playa Delray community since 1974. We thank you for this recognition. We are proud to represent Los Angeles, and we will continue to represent our community of Westchester Playa Delray. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Dennis, Dennis, just a second.
Yes, Mr. LaBonne.
What a great honor to honor these young champions who are city champs, which is so special. I had the opportunity in 1975, for three years, to coach women's softball at Pan Pacific Park, and it was a great experience, and I still run into some of those players. We weren't champs like you are champs, but we were division champs of our divisions. So thank you. And Bill, I hope you sent them all up to the tower, the Tom Bradley Tower, give them the full tour, because once you're a champion, no one can take that away. And thank the coaches and the mothers and the fathers for driving them all around.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Our final presentation for today will be CD8, Mr. Parks, Council District 8. And that's our final presentation for the day, then we will continue with our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask Jan Perry to come join me on this presentation because it is something that's an activity that's impacted both of our districts. I'd like to ask Greg Doolin to come up, and Adolf Doolin, his father, and all of their guests to come on up around the podium. Colleagues, today we're going to honor Greg Doolin, who is an example of a business leader who has turned his passion into profit and is dedicated to giving back. He was raised in View Park in L.A. County. He often found comfort in the kitchen, helping his mother and father prepare family meals, while his father was out starting a career in the restaurant business. Greg is a second-generation Los Angeles businessman, following the footsteps of his father, who's been deemed the king of soul food, who's Adolf Doolin. And in fact, this year, 2011, marks Greg's 25th anniversary in the restaurant and catering business. He's received his business finance degree from Howard University, is a graduate from UCLA Executive Management Program, and UCLA's Minority Entrepreneur Program. In 1991, he established the Doolin Restaurant and Catering Company, a full-service catering company and restaurant. Today, Greg operates as Doolin's Catering Company, providing top-notch catering services to both the corporate and private sector. Over the years, Greg has received numerous awards, certificates from his business and community work. In 2002, he was named Small Business Man of the Year by the Small Business Administration. Annually, Doolin's Catering donates breakfasts to over 300 breast cancer survivors at the American Cancer Society Relay for Life event. For over a decade, he has donated meals to the Debbie Allen Dance Academy and also donates catering for the LAPD's National Night Out. Whether it's donating breakfasts or providing lunch for 400 who volunteer to build a park or feeding 1,500 homeless families on Skid Row, Greg has always given back to his community.
Now, some of Doolin's catering clients include Black Entertainment Television, or BET, Sony, Paramount, Nickelodeon, his own church, First AME, and his fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha. Doolin's Catering was one of the first private catering companies to serve lunch at one of Los Angeles' public charter schools. And at the peak of this 10-year period, Greg was serving 8,000 lunches per day to schoolchildren from grades K through 12. Greg was the first private caterer to take over the kitchen of a Los Angeles public school, when he was awarded the contract from Green Dot Public Schools to run the school food service operation at Locke High School, serving 3,000 meals a day. Aside from the birth of his two children, another major highlight for Greg was serving lunch to Prince Charles of England in 1994 during his visit to a local Los Angeles high school. Greg gave the prince his first taste of soul food. Recently, Doolin's Catering, side by side with Doolin's Soul Food Kitchen, that's his father Adolf's company, successfully debuted at the Sixth Annual Taste of Soul Los Angeles. So today, we'd all like to express our appreciation too and commend Greg Doolin for his incredible service as a business owner who has been dedicated to serving his community for over 25 years. Mr. Parks has a resolution, and we wish to extend our best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors for many, many years to come.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. You know, I have to commend you, Greg, and the entire family. Anytime I've ever had anything to eat, be it at the restaurant or catering, it was phenomenal. And for those of you that don't know, it's the best fried chicken on the planet you can get from the Doolin family. Now, I really think this is, you deserve this, and I wish it would have happened years ago, because I just found out that you are a member of the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. So that means from here on out, you and I have a special handshake that we will be giving each other that we have not for all of the years that we've known each other. So anyway, congratulations to you and your family, and keep up the good job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, one other thing I want to do, because we can't honor Greg without honoring his father. Adolf is the one that got the business started, and we'd like to ask Adolf to come up and receive a certificate at this time also.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to take that away from you, Bob Minnie. Well, good morning. I'm truly honored, and I want to say greetings to the Los Angeles City Council, and I want to give special thanks to Councilmember Bernard Parks and the L.A. City Council for the special recognition. This year, I'm proud to say that I've served the Los Angeles community for 25 years, and I can tell you in the food business, that's not easy. I've been the owner of Doolin's Restaurant and Catering Company for all those years, and I started the catering business back in 1986. My first catering job was for the Los Angeles Raiders, who had just won the Super Bowl. And I learned a valuable lesson about feeding football players. When you feed football players, you have to take triple the amount of food. After I fed the first, after the first 10 guys went through the line, I started to run out of food, and I still had 50 players to feed. That was not pleasant. In 1982, I opened Doolin's Restaurant, six weeks after the Rodney King riots. I became famous for my all-you-can-eat down-home Sunday brunch, fried chicken, macaroni and cheese, collard greens, homemade biscuits. It was very, very delicious. Grits, too. Grits, too. My longevity in business has come with many trials and triumphs. As mentioned, one of my greatest honors was when I was chosen to serve lunch to Prince Charles during his visit to Los Angeles in 1994, and I did give the prince his first taste of soul food. As a Howard University grad, I learned the importance of giving back to the community, and I can honestly say, whether it's donating hundreds of meals to the Children's Hospital like we did on Thanksgiving Day this year, feeding breast cancer survivors for the American Cancer Society like we do each year, my dad and I have created over 1,000 jobs over the years. We've always given back. For the last 10 years, we participated in the LAPD National Night Out, and just last night, for the 11th year in a row, we donated over 200 meals to the Debbie Allen Dance Academy annual fundraiser. I can honestly say that I truly strive to be a contributing factor to the city of Los Angeles. But what I also want to say is that I strive to keep the rich tradition and culture of southern home cooking alive in Los Angeles. I have taken soul food from Crenshaw to Calabasas, to Glendale, Malibu, Beverly Hills, all over the Southern California region. I've taken food, our food, our rich culture, to areas that traditionally do not have access to good home cooking, delicious fried chicken. I actually love what I do, and in the 25 years that I've been in business, I've never felt like I've had a job. Finally, I'd like to thank these people standing behind me. You've met my dad. I'd like to thank Ms. Dorothy Williams. I'd like to thank all of my staff, my bookkeeper, my marketing folks, cooks, catering staff, everybody's here with me today, helping me to enjoy this honor. I'd like to thank you very much, and I'd like to ask my dad to come up, because he is the king of soul food. He reminds me every day. I'd like him to come up and just to say a few words. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for inviting the Doolin family here, to the honorable City Council members, to Mr. Bernard Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Wesson, and everybody else that I've known for the last 37 years that I've been in the restaurant business. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve the minority community. And as Greg pointed out, after 37 years, combined with our other restaurants, we think we have provided about 1,000 jobs in the minority community. Even during the recession, we still have about 30 or more employees working. Even during the recession, we still have about 30 or more employees working for us right now. We have owned on Kisses Back Porch, for those of you who've known about it, in Marina Del Rey, where my two daughters run it now, Danielle and Tiffany. I have a son, Jeff, who works in the restaurant business, with his wife, Lynn. I have a son, Terry, in Baltimore, Maryland, who is our part of the business in terms of back east. I have a partner, Ms. Dorothy Williams, who is helping me to operate the restaurants now. And I just want to say that if it hadn't been for me living in that log cabin in Oklahoma, where I was raised, and my mother showing me and making me come in and help her to cook collard greens, macaroni and cheese, fried chicken, black-eyed peas, and especially on the Sunday when the preacher was coming for Sunday dinner, which I hated because it seemed that not all of the kids were going to get something to eat, but we did. And I just want to say thank you all for allowing me this great opportunity for me and my family to be a part of the greater Los Angeles, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry. And that concludes our presentations for today. Acknowledge all those being honored here at Los Angeles City Council. We'll now go to public comment. Public comment, Arnold Sacks, followed by John Walsh. Public comment, two minutes. Public comment, any subject.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I, too, would like to pass my congratulations on to the two restaurants that were honored at the City Council. But it somehow makes you wonder just how dysfunctional this city is. Both restaurateurs were acknowledging or acknowledged for the fact that they made donations to the city, one to the fire department, one to some charities. Yet, when the city needed meals for the public servants, for the police and the fire and the sheriffs, who were on duty for the Michael Jackson funeral, they managed to call San Bernardino for a $16,000 luncheon order. You wonder would either one of these restaurateurs would have liked to have gotten a slice of that $16,000 order, and why it wasn't done that way. But that's being business-friendly to the businesses in the city. That being said, I'd also like to congratulate the news broadcasters who are honored here also. But let me ask, say, be informed. This is from November 16th, when the City Council took action to regarding the business tax exemptions of certain mutual funds. It was reported in a newspaper, the City Council took steps on Wednesday to chip away at the city's business tax, voting to exempt mutual fund firms. That's not what it says on the agenda. It says mutual funds, not anything about any firms. So what kind of information do you get when you get newspapers who write, like the L.A. Times, that these things are occurring? I don't know. Also like to talk about, you know, again, here's Steve Lopez discussing outrage at why the L.A. Housing Agency guy was just left with $1.2 million. But where's Mr. Lopez to ask about who created this incentive program for the housing director in the first place to get that kind of salary and to get those kinds of benefits?
Thank you.
But that's being informed.
Mr. Walsh, two minutes, public comment.
John Walsh, brand-new posting out this morning, HollywoodHighlands.org. I was here a week ago Wednesday. I said, I asked for, called for officially, a United Nations investigation nationwide of police brutality and human rights violations at the Occupy sites. I'm happy to say that two days later, according to the Huffington Post, the U.N. has picked it up, and there will be a United Nations investigation. You want all the details, come to HollywoodHighlands.org at Walsh Confidential. And the rapporteur of the investigator is from Honduras. He is a Central American. Laura Chick for mayor, everybody knows she's running for mayor. We have all the details on our website. It is her official kickoff. She's negotiating with the mayor, Mayor Vieragosa, and may very well get his support. Zev is in the toilet. And incidentally, I must repeat what she said about you in her press release earlier this week. Disgusting. That's what she said. Now, if I say that, I can be arrested, but Laura Chick said it in Berkeley. She's coming down here, she will be your next mayor. As far as Occupy L.A., now we find out why some of the Occupy L.A. people were attacking me. They were undercover LAPD officers. You know that big jar of urine? Well, half of it belonged to the occupiers, and the big jar of urine, half of it was LAPD piss. That's what half of it was. In fact, they had over 100 officers undercover. It was in a gigantic undercover operation, and it was broken, not by the LAPD and the media, it was broken by city news service. And our next thing we're telling you is we're going to Amnesty International, and we are getting an investigation of all political prisoners nationwide. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Have a good weekend, Mr. Walsh. Sage Conti? Conti? And this will be our final public speaker. Two minutes, ma'am.
Dejee Kuti, Central Hollywood. Wanted to thank you all for your time and attention, and wish you a happy holiday. I'm here this morning to speak with you about medical cannabis. I know that this body is going to discuss whether or not to ban medical cannabis dispensaries in the city. I just wanted to let this body know that I was in Sacramento last week. Several thousand patients got together, and we presented a petition to the governor, and I got some FaceTime with the staff at Kamala Harris's office, along with some state assembly members and state senators. And they are currently working on state draft regulations based on the Attorney General guidelines. So before this body discusses taking up a ban, I think it would be a good idea for you to work with those members on the Sacramento who are drafting statewide regulations for medical cannabis dispensaries. Again, those are going to be based very largely on, at the time, the Attorney General Brown's guidelines. So if anyone has any questions, I'm sure that many people on this body know how to get ahold of me from my work on the Medical Marijuana Working Group. You can also get ahold of me at CannabisSavesLives.org. Do not ban dispensaries. You desperately need the tax revenue, and the city wants you, and the state wants you to continue to have these collectives for that revenue that is going to the Board of Equalization. Thank you. Happy holidays.
That completes our public comment for today. Public comment is closed. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number two, called special for Councilmembers Rosendahl and Reyes.
Mr. Rosendahl, I'll ask that we hold that a moment. He's taking photos, and he'll be back momentarily. Let's continue the next one, please.
Very good. That brings us to item three, called special for cards.
Number three, Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, number three.
Well, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This is regarding a stormwater project along Glen Oaks Boulevard. So I'm wondering, because you just raised sewer rates for infrastructure, why, what the relationship between the rate raise that you just called for and the Prop O funds needed for sewer construction? If you have Prop O funds usable for sewer construction, why would you need to raise the rates? I know. Because by all accounting done in the city of L.A., if anything, we're honest, open, and transparent, and Prop O funds are used differently than the fees raised for, the fees that go on to your DWP bill regarding infrastructure repair for the Bureau of Sanitation. And you can be sure of that, because you know how open and honest they are at DWP, following in the footsteps of the City Council. Thank you for your time, answers, and attention.
John Walsh.
John Walsh, America's least-wanted, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. And you can Facebook us at Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I, or you can Google us at Walsh Confidential or Miki's Pointed View. This is an interesting contract. It concerns stormwater capture, but it was put through the Department of Public Works's Office of Community Beautification. It was a special deal established solely for Project O funds, Proposition O funds. And who gets the money? The Hollywood Beautification Team, which, as we know, the members, the people behind it, are constantly putting money in Garcetti's campaign. I just don't read the L.A. Times to get my information. That would be like reading the Berlin papers during World War II to find out anti-Nazi propaganda. It doesn't work. That's what's happening here. And I'd just like to say that, incidentally, you may wonder why this is pink.
Mr. Zine, he's not talking about the storm project.
It's pink because they think I'm gay.
Thank you. On that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we can go back to number two. Mr. Rosendahl has returned. Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Reyes.
Oh, yes, thank you. I will defer to Mr. Reyes right now with his amendment, but then I would like to speak.
And we do have a card. Do you want to hear from the speaker?
No, the speaker I'm going to bring up in my comments.
All right. Okay, go ahead then.
Council President, we do have an amendment for item number two, and that is that I ask that we amend item number one to execute 38 Mills Act historical properties contract instead of 39 contracts. As the applicant of the property located at 3522 Meyer Street has withdrawn their application. That's N-E-I-E-R, 3522 Meyer Street, and they withdrew their application. So instead of 39 contracts, we have 38 Mills Act historical property contracts.
All right, that's seconded by Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, you have to speak now. And then Mr. Weisar, Mr. Labonge.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I want to say that this is a historic, positive moment for me. The Mills Act designates historical, cultural monuments and buildings and everything else that we need to preserve. And I was urged to declare it, through the Mills Act, Lincoln Place, as such a structure and area. Many of you know the history of Lincoln Place over the years. One of my most important memories in my first few months on the council was in December of 2005, when I went to Lincoln Place and watched the sheriffs arrest people or take them out of their homes, and I have been in absolute mortification ever since. Since that time, a lot has happened. We're at a very historic moment, from a historic standpoint, with the Mills Act, where this approval of Lincoln Place being in that package will allow Lincoln Place to move forward. And if I could, just on my time, Mr. President, ask Cindy Starett from AMCO to just make a comment of what this means from AMCO's perspective. But most importantly, I want to let my constituents know that those that want to go back to that location will be able to go back in not that long of a period of time. I look forward to that moment. Could you just bring us up to date, from your perspective, what the Mills Act needs?
Mr. Rosendahl, since your time's almost up, why don't we just give her her own time, in addition to your time?
Perfect.
There you go. Go ahead, Cindy.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Cindy Starett from Latham &amp; Watkins. I'm here on behalf of AMCO and the Lincoln Place team. We want to thank Councilman Rosendahl and his staff and the whole city family for bringing us here today to recommend this approval under the Mills Act. The council approved a settlement agreement a little more than a year ago, and since that time, we've been working very hard with all members of the city family to move forward with the permitting, with the planning, and of course, with the historic preservation of this project. That includes an application for federal tax credits, and of course, it includes this Mills Act contract that you see before you today. This becomes a model project for introducing sustainability, which has been one of the initiatives of Councilman Rosendahl, to projects that were built in the '50s and '60s in Los Angeles, and allowing those projects to receive reinvestment. In our case, it's over $150 million, so that nearly 800 families can return to this wonderful community. We will be investing this money in jobs. We have people working at the site today. We pulled the permits for Phase 1 last month, and our returning tenants, those who asked to go back to the project as part of the settlement, will be back this spring in their previous units, completely rebuilt, but to historic standards and with sustainability. These are prevailing wage contracts with union workers. We expect to employ 600 to 800 workers before the whole project is finished. This Mills Act is critical to us to be able to move forward with the future phases of the project. We are under consideration with HUD, and the city has been very supportive for a loan so we can move forward and finish the project. The Mills Act is very, very important to making that happen, and we are very appreciative of all the help from the city. We look forward to many more celebrations to come. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar, then Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just wanted to raise to everyone's attention our need to, again, look at our funding that we have available for the Mills Act. Back in 1994, the council set a $1 million cap on the Mills Act tax credits, and now, 15 years later, we are close to reaching that cap. And this report mentions that after this action today, we would have, we will be at 93.6% capacity. In other words, we are running out of funding available for those applications who are now going to apply for Mills Act funding. I have put in a motion that was heard by Plumb a few weeks ago, that asks our planning department and our CEO to report on appropriate mechanisms for increasing or renewing the cap, so that the city can continue to accept Mills Act applications and keep this powerful historic preservation tool in place. So I look forward to getting that report back, so that we could once again continue to provide property owners incentives to preserve their properties. I just want to bring that to everyone's attention again, so that we can look out for that when that gets back in council. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge.
I just ask staff, is it 39 applications? You can go to the center table. 38? Why wouldn't they be listed by address, Mr. City Clerk or City Attorney? It just says 39. I would think we'd want to know where all those addresses are.
I have the list, Senator.
I understand that. I know you do, but I'm asking an official question of the clerk or the city attorney. On this item here, it says 39 properties. I would love, it's just like a 39 ABC licenses. We certainly want to have them listed. I'd like to know where the 38 are. And should they be listed as a public record on the agenda? They're not, by the agenda item, they're not listed? Look at your agenda.
We have a report.
I got that.
It's an attachment to the report, Mr. Labonge.
But on the public agenda?
Oh, on the agenda itself.
Right.
Mr. Labonge, I can't answer that. That's more of a, the clerk develops the agenda from Plumb.
What do you think? Why aren't we listing by address? I've never seen us put 38 locations that benefit or detract on an issue. Why wouldn't we list them by, by address? Not individual, but all on one council file? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know where these 38 are, and I'm going to make a decision on this, which I'm going to vote to approve, but I certainly feel that this should be listed out as an address. Do you see what I'm saying, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Labonge. Is there a deadline that we're facing on these?
Yes, the Lambert-Geisinger with the planning department. The contracts are required to be recorded prior to December 31st.
Well, we've got time. Well, we've got time. I'm just saying, and if we could approve it, I'm okay with that. But I would think, because sometimes I get corrected by the city attorney or the clerk's office, that on this issue here, this is significant, and I think it should list all the good spots that are going to have this benefit. That's my question. I'm just surprised that it's not listed.
Mr. Labonge, Ken Bernstein with Department of City Planning. I would only add that, again, the addresses have been provided in the report that accompanied the agenda item.
But the public doesn't see that report. That's all I'm doing, Mr. Bernstein.
No, I understand.
In the future, could we list if there's 30, 22, 19? That's all I'm asking.
If there's no urgency to do it, have it approved today, perhaps the matter can be agendized for next week, continue for next week with the actual addresses.
Would it make any, I'm just saying, if we're not going to be challenged, if we're going to be challenged, I would want to make sure we do it right, so.
I would also add, again, all of these are voluntary contracts entered into between the property owner and the city, and, again, it is a voluntary contract and agreement supported by each of those owners at those addresses, so.
All right. What do you think, Mr. Reyes?
Well, Mr. Reyes, you are the next up, so take it away.
Thank you. In committee, we did ask if we can get an understanding of where these contracts are located. We did want information that allows us, those council members that want to put on the websites, to have a link where we could actually, in some cases, celebrate the fact that we are getting resources from the state to help our infrastructure, our housing. So from a very pragmatic point of view, Councilmember, we are asking the department to provide the listing of these addresses and to link them up so that we can have access to them on our websites, and we can have people know where these contracts are going. And more importantly, it allows us to also let folks know how to apply, where to apply, and be more aggressive in getting our shit.
They may see a house in a neighborhood, say, "Well, I want to do that to my house too." So that's why I bring this up, because I think we should. So I think I have a little point, because the city attorney hasn't told me to not speak. And so if we could look at it in the future, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, and vote to approve this today, Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
And then in the future, though, list whatever they are. And if you could provide for the Council, I'm sure we'd like to read that.
And we will be reporting back, not only on this year's contracts, but mapping the contracts throughout the program, the 600 or so properties over the last 15 years.
Mr. Weezer.
I mean, it's been resolved. I think I wanted to clarify for the city attorney, the issue is not to, that we would need to postpone it for lack of complying with the Brown Act and sufficiency in our agenda. The issue is just Mr. Labonge would like to provide more information on our agenda for people to see that. So if Mr. Labonge's office, planning, and the city clerk can work together to see for the next round of applications that they actually list the addresses on the agenda. But again, I think our city clerk, they're always working for ways to provide enough information on the agenda without inundating it with all the specifics on our reports. But in this case, if that's the will of the body, we should look at that. If you could work Mr. Labonge's office and the city clerk. But we should not hold it up. I think the issue was just that Mr. Labonge would like more information on the agenda, and there's no need to hold it up.
All right, Mr. City Attorney on this matter?
Just to follow up on Mr. Weezer's comments, the agenda description meets the minimum requirements of the Brown Act and is appropriate. There could be more information, but it meets the requirements of the Brown Act.
All right, that matters before us for a vote, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number four, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sachs, John Walsh, item number four.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sachs. This is a sidewalk project by the Los Angeles Unified School District North Hill Skills Center. But I thought the Council was considering having the public maintain their sidewalks. And I also thought that CRA was putting in 50 million as part of the parking garage for the Broad Museum that included sidewalks and street work. So when is a project not, maybe there's not a CRA district or area in the 7th, in the 7th district? Maybe they don't have a CRA funds available in the 7th district. I don't know. Excuse me? No, it doesn't say CRA money. But again, okay, so we're being told that it is CRA money, but it doesn't say anything in the item on the agenda. AB 1290. But specific, just like the last item on the agenda. I know this meets the requirements of the Brown Act, but shouldn't it be more specific in that sense? You had two items, you had two arguments there, and you heard that the chairman asked for the listing of the developments that were going to be met under the Mills Act. But it's passed already, so we don't really know. All I'm asking about is the specifics here. You're saying it's CRA act? Put it in the agenda. It also said redevelopment. It said development funds with the project on Figaroa Street.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, for identification purposes, member of the LaRice for Mayor Exploratory Committee. We formed it about 20 minutes ago. And I'd like to point out here, as far as, I don't know what the difference is between redevelopment projects and community redevelopment projects, but it says redevelopment on page five. HollywoodHighlands.org, and, incidentally, there's a new posting up there, Walsh Confidential. Google it. As far as the CRA is concerned, you're not going to have much more money coming from the CRA for more projects or to fund this project to its completion because we expect that the Supreme Court of the State of California will uphold the abolishing, abolishment of the CRA. We'd like to point out that otherwise, you're doing a wonderful job. Whenever I praise them, they never stop me. The city attorney never stops me and says I'm off topic when I praise them. And as far as this is concerned, you have blue and you have pink IDs. Pink is that they think you're gay? Blue is that they think.
All right, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, about a sidewalk. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, about a sidewalk, and that matters now before us. Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, Councilmembers, this is, this is an allocation of AB 1290 under community redevelopment law that allows us to have discretion over 20% of the funds that are tax increment in this area. This is not a CRA project. It is using AB 1290 funds that are derived from tax increment out of the CRA for the purpose of building a new sidewalk where there is no sidewalk and hundreds of people traverse from Laurel Canyon to the North Valley Occupational Center. $31,200 is a small amount of money to help those people so that they do not have to walk on the street, on Rinaldi, in a very busy street, and, or in what I would say are not necessarily safe conditions of dirt that are currently there. So I would ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Matter is before us, colleagues. On number four, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item five, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sachs, number five, sir. Mr. Sachs, you're down to one minute.
Yes, thank you. Another fund here with the Quimby fees, $18,792. Now, Quimby fees are supposed to be used to, or be allocated to create new parks within the city. So is there any possibility of getting a accounting of what the status is on the amount of Quimby fees that are being held over in the city council, in the city, and/or action being taken to spend some of those Quimby fees in park-rich L.A.? You know, it's only $18,000. Chicken feed. It's only $31,000 per sidewalk. More chicken feed. But then you start to add all those numbers up, and pretty soon, you're feeding a lot of chickens. So again, I'm asking about Quimby fees for park presentation. This is, we get a lot of property that's being changed by planning land use management, but we never really seem to get any items on the agenda that Quimby fees will be paid or Quimby fees will be used to create a park. Why the push for all the property redevelopment that would include Quimby fees, but no shove for the parks?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Labonge.
Mr. President, I'll be happy to help with that. Where do you live, sir? All right, well, I'll tell you about the parks in my district, you can know.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. The matter is before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please. How about special meeting?
Mr. President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yes, I would.
Very good. Alarcon, Cardenas, England, or Weezer, Carretts, Corcoran, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and according, Mr. President.
First item under the special, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number six. Item six is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. Number six, special meeting. Mr. Walsh, why don't you come forward while Mr. Sachs finds his papers. Mr. Walsh, thank you.
John Walsh, of the LaRice for Mayor campaign, boosters. HollywoodHighlands.org and, of course, Walsh Confidential, new posting out today. Find out what was happening undercover. This, incidentally, involves affordable housing at 5555 Hollywood. That's near where I live. I've lived in this city since 1976, and I lived in this city 10 years before, in 1966. So I go back a way. And as, our position is, as long as this money is going through, directly through, without the CRA involved, and I don't know what the difference is between CRA money, CRA project, redevelopment, in fact, the previous case was, and fix the sidewalks, but do it straight without a CRA, which you will have to be doing pretty soon, within the next few weeks. HollywoodHighlands.org, read our latest post and be shocked at what you're not hearing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. Now, I could be wrong here, which would not be the first time, but this Housing Trust Fund would be overseen by the L.A. Housing Agency that's been in the news lately. That would be the agency where nobody knew what the head of the agency was being paid, his payout. The mayor didn't know, the council didn't know, nobody knew. But the agency here is going to oversee a project that involves lots of money. So who's going to oversee the agency's oversight of the money when nobody knows what the hell anybody's being paid in the agency? Accounting, accounting, accounting. We've heard from Mr. Labonge requesting information on, on projects under the Mills Act. Yeah, well, you know, next time. But the Mills Act is running out of funding, so there may not be a next time until there gets, be more funding. Then we heard about a project that's CRA.
Mr. Sachs, let's talk about this particular one, please.
Sir.
Not the others, just about this one. Let's focus on this. Just focus on this one.
I can't focus on this one.
Well, then, I guess you're going to have to conclude your conversation, sir.
Well, I will have to complete it. So anyway, we have an agency that nobody knows how it's being run with two examples of redundancy in the city council by.
No, that's not, that's not, Mr. Sachs, you're done. Thank you very much. On this matter, colleagues, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, at this point in time, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes.
Very good. That brings us to special item number one. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, special one, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the DWP has requested that Council take immediate action to exempt from the Holiday Moratorium and request a noise variance for emergency water main repairs at Sherman Way and Haskell that are scheduled to begin tonight at 11:00 p.m. and last through the weekend. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
On that item, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The matter now. See no one on the queue? See the necessity for this item? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, would you like to send that matter forthwith?
Yes, that starts tonight?
Yes.
All right, yes, forthwith.
Very good, sir. There's also been a request to send item six forthwith, excuse, from the special agenda, item six forthwith as well.
Send that forthwith?
Very good.
Mr. Labonge, to Mr. Labonge for a moment.
Just on, on these issues of the emergency, when there's an emergency, do they have to wait for the city council to act? Or should we give them a blanket emergency?
Mr. City Attorney?
I'll ask the city attorney for a conversation on Monday.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, you have the answer to that?
The Rule 23 was just for this item, so if you want to make a broader scope of this, it would have to be through a different motion.
All right, so we'll talk about and see in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge, you had a presentation?
Yeah, thank you very much. If you could. And Camille Blanche from my office is going to pass. We have the 30th anniversary of our sister city program for Quanjo, which is started by Mayor Bradley. And if you could just pass those to Councilmembers, Camille.
Mr. Labonge, use the microphone, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Over 30 years ago, then Mayor Bradley saw the vision to develop a sister city relationship with Quanjo, China. Quanjo is old Canton in the southern part of China, and through the friendship between our two cities, there's been many great exchanges. Our very own Mayor Villarosa has visited with the people of Quanjo, as well as here in Los Angeles on a number of events. But this young man is a very special young man from the city of Quanjo, and I want to give him a very special commendation. I'm joined by Victoria and Buck, as well as, yeah, from the, from the Sister City Committee as well, and my staff. Jackson, you've been a great young man to come here to Los Angeles, and he's got a chance to see San Francisco, San Diego, the zoo, Miracle Mile, and many other places. Jackson, we say xie xie.
Thank you.
Right here, make your short speech.
Thank you so much. So great honor for me to be invited to be in Los Angeles and United States. This, for me, is a great dream come true. United States is so beautiful and big. You have so good environmental protection. And I really enjoyed the trip in United States, and thank you so much for all the people here.
Xie xie.
And, Mr. Labonge, there was a reception last evening in the Bradley Tower celebrating Quanjo Sister City.
Well, Quanjo Sister City, and Jeffrey Lee was there, Jeffrey Chug, everybody was very happy. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and congratulations to our great sister city, Quanjo, China. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Rosenthal requests to be excused from Council on January 13 due to personal business, and that meets Council policy.
Ms. Perry approves that one.
Very good, sir. The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues, seeing announcements in the chamber. Mr. Labonge.
Just want to let you know, two beautiful tiger cubs, four-month-old, are now on display at the Los Angeles Zoo. Some mature tiger cubs emerged this morning in a beautiful way. The Sumatra tiger cubs emerged this morning in a beautiful way with many people to enjoy. So for those of you who haven't been to the zoo lately, come and enjoy the great Los Angeles Zoo and Botanical Gardens. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Just want to remind the public for the Ninth Annual Eighth District Toy Giveaway will be 10 o'clock at Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza, right in front of the new Staples Store.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, then Mr. Rosenthal.
Would like to remind the public that tomorrow, Saturday, will be the redistricting commission meeting at Santee High School Saturday morning. I hope you'll join us to talk about the future of the Ninth Council District. Santee High School between Los Angeles and Maple, just south of Washington Boulevard.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on Saturday, if you want to come to the beach, which we'd love to have you, there are a couple of great events in Venice. The first one is the taking this paddle double tournament and paddle tennis court ribbon cutting. What happened is Los Angeles Wreckon Park will be holding a ribbon cutting for the reopening of the refurbished paddle tennis courts. Following the ribbon cutting, the U.S. Panel Tennis Association will kick off their December to Remember Doubles Tournament. And that's at Venice Beach in the morning, 9:30, 10:00, and you can watch the tournament. And then, at 1 o'clock, you can walk over to Oakwood Park with some toys and some gifts for a holiday drive for those who would be real happy, especially kids, to get these gifts. And that will be at the Oakwood Park, and we'll be there at 1 o'clock. So come down to Venice Beach on Saturday and have some fun, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Announcements? I have a couple, the Channel 7 Stuff the Best with Garth Kemp is currently taking place. It will take place this evening at Topanga and Victory in front of the Sears, the Westfield Shopping Town. People are invited to go by and drop off gifts for the needy in our community. Also, Walgreens on Topanga Canyon, the Chips Program, collecting toys. And on Sunday, at Snow Monkey in the Westfield, Topanga, they are also collecting toys. Snow Monkey at Westfield, bring a toy, and you can receive a free gift certificate for a snow monkey, which is a new dessert that is in the Westfield Shopping Town. That's Topanga and Victory in the beautiful city, all-American city of Canoga Park. A lot of activities, a lot of holiday parties, so please be careful as you're celebrating at the holiday parties. Be careful on the roads. Colleagues, any adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, please stand. Adjourning motions, Ms. Perry, adjourning motions, please stand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have the very sad honor of adjourning in memory of a good friend. His name was, or is, Mike Pfeifer. He was a beloved member of the South Park community in downtown Los Angeles. In 1992, Mike Pfeifer founded the South Park Stakeholders Group, a nonprofit city services support group that became the precursor to what is now known as the Business Improvement District. Mike subsequently established the South Park BID and served as its executive director until his death, working in concert with residential and commercial property owners devoted to redeveloping and revitalizing the South Park District in Los Angeles. In addition to serving on boards of numerous nonprofits and community-based organizations, he was a good friend and a good advisor to the California Hospital Medical Center, helping it grow into a major trauma center. His work to improve the communities of South Park and Figueroa will stand as a testament to his passion and his tireless efforts to protect the safety and well-being of the people, the businesses, the organizations, and all those who call this area home. He had over 30 years of management, marketing, and communications experience, and he was instrumental in paving the way for greater investment and development of new projects in downtown Los Angeles. He will be sincerely missed by all, all of us who call South Park home. He was a tireless champion for economic development and quality of life for the people who lived in South Park and the Figueroa corridor, and my heartfelt condolences go out to his wife, Judy, and his two adult daughters and their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none? Announcement, Mr. Alarcon to an announcement.
Yeah, colleagues, I just wanted to mention for the residents of the northeast San Fernando Valley that the redistricting commission will be meeting at the Senior Center on Glen Oaks Boulevard, the Alicia Brada Senior Center, at 11 o'clock tomorrow to discuss redistricting in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I encourage people to come, participate in their democracy.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Labonge, did you have a comment?
You would join with me on Tuesday to adjour in memory of Harry Morgan. Harry Morgan, the great actor from MASH and also.
Adam Dragnet.
From Dragnet and anything, Harry Morgan.
Harry Morgan, may he rest in peace.
96 years old.
Great, great life. With that, we conclude this meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Good afternoon, Los Angeles. Have a lovely weekend. We are now concluding our council meeting for Friday. Have a good weekend. Good afternoon, Los Angeles.